Good evening. This is Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and some of the attendees are participating by video conference accordingly. Please be aware that other folks will be able to see you, that ugly band T-shirt you decided to wear tonight, or anything you intend to or not screen share on your computer. Anything that you broadcast will be captured and recorded forever and ever and will wind up as a TikTok video to be shared amongst your neighbors and friends. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that the members of Planning Board are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
Here.
Timothy Wheeler.
Here.
Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
Thomas Andrew.
Here.
With a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty-six P M. Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board being conducted remotely consistent with the Governor's Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of COVID nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly physically accessible location and allows us and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After their concluding remarks, I'll invite each board member by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights, and/or motions. Please hold all your insights until your name is called. Board members and speakers on the agenda. Please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure the accurate minutes are recorded. For any response, please wait until you yield to the floor and state your name before speaking. If a board member wishes to engage in conversation with another board member, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. So first order of business is I will accept the motion to accept the minutes of the meeting of our last meeting. Accept the minutes of the meeting of our last meeting.
Some of.
Back in a second.
Excellent. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion, any corrections, any notes of interest to anybody? Seeing none, I will ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Is there any other administrative matters or mail that we need to address?
Um, well, I got the email from the FEMA people, which Carolyn looked at, right? We're supposed to look at the floodplain ma- flood area maps and decide whether the changes that were made are acceptable. And were there any changes in our area?
Not that I saw, not in Berlin.
Yeah.
There were some, I think the closest I saw were in Bolton.
Do we need to formally vote on that?
Oh.
Sure.
Has anybody asked us to do anything with it other than just to review it?
It was kind of weird.
Yeah, right. I think it's, you know, review and if you have comments, send them in. But I don't think they were firing us to do anything if we had no comments.
Okay.
All right. You don't think we should send them an email saying we at least we looked at them and?
You can, if you want. It makes your heart feel better.
Well, if you did it, it would make my heart feel better. Because I looked at it and it was actually pretty cool.
No, but then they'll be confused because then they'll get Carolyn McDonald from Conservation and Carolyn McDonald from Planning.
Oh, you already responded.
We don't want to confuse the feds.
Okay, I'll respond that we we looked at it and there were no changes. Yeah.
So, I mean, Carolyn, you responded, right?
I haven't yet, but it's on my list.
Conservation's gonna, I mean.
Yeah.
If, like you say, if Jay really is, you know, all warm and fuzzy about this, let him do it, but.
So when we're reviewing.
Doing it, what the hell?
Yeah, when we were looking at A N R's and site plans and things, we're the people that look at the flood maps, is that?
I ain't good.
No, I thought I thought we were given that response.
Generally, the site engineer does.
We're we're responsible for making a lot.
Yeah.
So we review dimensions, we review uh frontage, we review all the nuts and bolts of setbacks, that type of thing, but.
Sometimes we do site plans, right?
In a larger in a larger subdivision, yeah.
I thought like a year ago, the topic of who in the town is responsible for floodplanes in FEMA and it ended up being us.
I think it. Who else would it be?
Conservation.
Conservation is Conservation is the Wetlands Protection Act.
Huh.
Which in FEMA is federal.
But if if a property is gonna flood, what do we care?
Well, someone should be looking to see that when a new building is being proposed, it's not being put inside the floodplain generally.
So is that Richard?
Well.
Right, the engineer or Richard.
Yeah, but I just, do you remember when this came up? Because we talked about it. We got some correspondence from, maybe it was from FEMA saying who's responsible? I think it's you guys. And we said, yes, it was. It was at least a year ago. I can go, I'll look for the notes in the minutes.
In the case of a project that demands site plan approval from us, it it would be appropriate for us to have them demonstrate where the floodplain was. But and like Tom says, in most cases where we're just approving an A N R, we're just doing the dimensional requirements and it's the building inspector that's got to look at the issues of floodplain and stuff.
Yeah. But if we are doing site plan review, then we we would do.
Right. The last project I remember it being relevant for was River Bridge for the apartments.
Yeah.
And actually, looking at the current floodplain maps, the back two buildings are in the floodplain. Because I think it's been revised.
I mean, they revised it after we first approved River Bridge and River Bridge modified their plan and adjusted. And actually, they, didn't they?
Um. Yeah, they had to move the daycare center or something. It was up in that that corner somewhere.
They did some, uh, what do they call it? They didn't compensate, but they.
Replicated?
Yeah, didn't they replicate some floodplain in one spot so they could build in another?
Could have.
I think they were moving material around.
Right.
Yeah. Replicate. But yeah, so I mean, we just. It's good for us to pay attention to it.
Most of the floodplain areas are areas that are that are protected under the Wetlands Protection Act.
Hmm.
Like all of Northbrook coming out of Lester Ross Dam, that was all part of the floodplain, that whole channel. Um. And I find it fascinating that the back two buildings, I mean, are in the Assabet floodplain. That would have to be some flood.
And I I mean, that is that a that's that's not a change from the last FEMA map?
The, on the map, it said that all of the changes were indicated in purple. And there was no purple in Berlin.
You you had to push a button to get that to show up, right?
No, because I saw some purple in Bolton.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Yeah.
It it doesn't make sense to me that there's buildings at River Bridge that are in the floodplain, given the fact that we reviewed that. They modified their plan as a result of where the floodplain was. In Berlin, there are, right now, there's only one building that's in the floodplain, and that's where McCann's Ice Cream used to be. And that's only part of the building.
Hmm.
But other than that, there's there's no structure in the floodplain. So I'd be.
Right. And and I mean, I looked at, I I will admit that I did not study it. And it, that's what it looked like, but.
Well, now you've got me worried, so I'm gonna go.
Uh oh, now Tim's heart is is all a flutter.
Yeah, who sent us this anyway? Who, where did it originate? From the Swakman's office?
FEMA, no, that was, I think it was sent directly to our planning board.
Right, so Jay is the one who sent it out.
Oh, it came from Planning Board.
Yeah.
I'm sure we accepted responsibility for that sometime in the last year or two. It's like a hot potato wanted it.
There it is. Look at that.
Really cool maps.
Well, Tim is, uh, studying that. Is there any other mail or anything else we need to address?
I got a I I got an email from Central Mass saying that we hadn't paid the last two invoices for the housing production plan. And I'm confident that we've.
We've been voting on them.
We've voted for both of them and I'm and I've turned the stuff into June, as far as I know. So I'm gonna go and see her tomorrow.
She's back. I saw her tonight.
Yeah, so I'll I'll go. But we've we've, I know we've signed them because.
Right, because I remember the one where we said, oh, this is the final.
Yeah.
I know we voted on them.
Yep.
So I will check with her tomorrow.
Okay, you want to see something really cool, since we have a minute here? Let's see, let's get this stuff out of the way. Ooh. Hmm. One, two, three. Is this like a magic trick?
I think he's gonna stand on his head.
It's virtually like a magic trick. Okay, do you see the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, that goes all the way. What's the date on that one? May twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
Right? And it goes all the way through to today. And I don't know how many pages it is, one hundred and eighty-seven pages. See this little box up here? I typed in FEMA. I would already searched it. It was really cool. It was, took a minute to search through all of it, but it didn't find it. So maybe I lied about us being.
About how cool it was?
You know that, we've got everything.
That's great.
It's got big somehow.
So if if I get you the notebooks from the last fifty years.
Piece of cake.
How'd you do it?
Uh, well, for a while, Tom and I had a deal where he would scan these or send them to me. Scan must, he was scanning them.
Yeah, I was scanning them.
And then I was posting them, so I had the P D S.
Right.
That's, you can't search, I don't think it's searching the the written text. I'm not sure.
Grab grab a word from the written text and search that.
Well, now, see, it looks like it's a picture.
Yeah.
So you can't.
It's not.
Yeah, it's a picture. It's a picture.
Not as cool as you promised.
Some of it might have done. But it will take. Oh, no, that's a picture too. Usually it tries to convert, when you click on a page, it tries to convert it to digital so that you can search it. This one is not. Yes, it says converting scanned page to editable text and images. It's doing that now. Yeah, there it is.
Can you do that with a handwritten one as well?
No, in fact, this one, it didn't read for some reason. Yeah, no, I think it's really hard to do with handwriting. You get, at best, you get half of it or something.
Right.
So it's still there if you want to search it, you know, manually. But the rest of this is cool because you can put a few words in, and it'll go through the whole hundred and eighty, or at least hundred pages and find it for you. Okay, that's the demo for the day. Let's see here.
Wasn't as scintillating as seeing you stand on your head, though.
Oh, sorry.
Hey, how do I determine which one of these maps is the one I want to look in? Did I do something?
I clicked the link.
That's what I did and it gave me. It gave me about twenty maps.
Um. I was able to zoom in on an area.
But.
Oh, yeah, how do you select the area? You can zoom in and out by holding down Control and rolling your mouse.
Yeah, but my problem is I've got twenty maps to choose from. I don't know which one to choose from.
It's just giving you the maps? It's not giving you a picture at all?
I'm clicking on a a.
Now you're making me go into my email.
Hey, Tim. So before we use up all our remaining free time here, do you want to say anything about the nine Lot nine A line B? Lot nine B issue or just leave it?
No, I think we should, um.
Those are the only things on my list.
Jay and I chatted with, um, Matt and Chris Cenny this morning and in the conversation, Jay said, you know, do you really want Bassett Road where it is on your plan? And you know, we asked the questions of who it belongs to, and it's assigned to the lots that it is part of. It's not separated out, um. And they said that they had, at one point, had talked to the police and fire chief about eliminating that road. And both police and fire had said, no, we'd like to see it maintained because it would give us access into the heart of the apartments. And and, uh, but they said that there's little use, there's less use of that than there is of the other end of Bassett near the cafe and Tyler. So they wanted to talk to the apartment folks about whether or not they'd want to continue to see it functional. And we said we'd be happy to talk to police and fire to see if they've still felt it was integral to the success of the project. And if it weren't that important, um, it might very well be truncated in such a way that it only became the access to whatever nine A and nine B, um, had built on it, you know, so. To, so I I, it's important, I guess, if if we were going to pursue that for us to be in somewhat agreement that it made sense. So, and I'm not sure it does. I mean, it just seemed like it was appropriate to ask some questions before they went ahead and filed a plan that had this road on it that might not be there. So that's what I took away from it, and Jay may have some other thoughts.
Um. Yeah, it's just, it's the the subdivision, the the split of into two lots that they were asking for from us. Um, the two lots were divided by that road, which doesn't exist. And it might be a good time to make it go away so they have more flexibility in selling, you know, the property to somebody if it's not needed.
So, Tim.
Yes, ma'am.
River Bridge is on panel two five oh two seven C O six five one F.
C six.
C zero six five one.
C zero six five one. Where the hell is that?
I don't know. So all I did is I just clicked on the link and it brought me to a map of the whole United States and I just zoomed in until I got where I wanted to be.
I clicked on the link and it gave me uh the codes for well, it took me to a page that said, what state? And I said Massachusetts. It said, what county? I said Worcester. And then it gave me all the FEMA maps for Worcester County. And you're saying it's two five oh two seven C.
Hmm, yeah.
Zero.
Six five one F.
Six. I don't even have that. Damn it. I got six oh five F. Where's that? This is getting worse and worse.
Um, all right, well, how about we do this?
Share. Why don't you screen share?
There we go.
Hey, what a novel idea.
What a novel idea.
I'm on Tea Party Circle and Explorer's Way.
Don't even know where those are.
I know, it doesn't make any sense. Mayflower Circle.
Oh, yeah.
Shoes.
Okay. So there's the mall. There's Highland Ridge. Oops. It, the Zoom is wicked sensitive, so don't get.
Yeah, look at that.
Seasick. Yeah.
That does not make any sense. I think we need to say, what the hell are you guys saying?
Okay.
Because we know that as a result of what FEMA was saying, River Bridge modified their plan and layout.
Right, and I thought that that was I thought that was this. Or something. I remember it being kind of up here in this corner.
Hmm.
Um, but I mean, they, look at, look at all of that, and that slopes towards the river. There would have to be a heck of a flood.
It doesn't make any sense.
Yeah.
All, yeah, it's nuts.
Bonkers, even. Um. But you can see that, not that. Um, if you zoom out, also takes a while to, for the data to load. But there was not any purple that I saw.
No.
So.
But I think it we, it would be good to question that location of the floodplain and at the River Bridge site, just because it isn't to my mind, consistent with what we now wait, now what you're looking at now? We don't see anything. Oh, there it is.
Yeah, like I say, when you move it, it takes a little bit for the data to populate.
Two five oh two seven zero six five one F.
Right, so when I zoom in.
That's effective two fourteen?
Yeah. That's what it says.
Oh, man. That's garbage.
Right, so, yeah, two five oh two seven C O six five one F. Hmm.
Okay.
All right.
I think Jay should write a letter.
A strongly worded letter?
Yeah.
All right. Moving on, so we keep on schedule here. Um, we have a discussion, a continuation of the sign by law. And we should have members of the school or representatives of the school in the audience.
There we go.
I have my worksheet available if you want to look at it, by the way. Remember the one we were working on, the outline of the bylaw.
Right, there's Kyle.
Hi.
Hello, how are you?
Good, and you?
Good, thank you. Is there anybody else?
No, I think I'm just the only one representing the committee.
Okay. Welcome.
Thanks.
So we, um, we're having a continuing discussion of the, um, sign by law that we're trying to overhaul. Uh, we've made some progress on it, but it's been glacial. Um, so we've actually are interested in hearing what you guys are working on and, uh, what you represent the school and their desire to have, um, an L E D sign, right? With the greatest technology?
Yeah, I represent the parents of the school.
Okay.
So the the school is, uh, very much interested in having a sign. The district is very much interested in having a sign, so so they're certainly on board, but I represent the parents and the parent teacher organization.
Okay. Cool.
Yeah.
So can you update us on where you're at with?
Yeah.
Discussions you've been having? Okay.
So we, um, have been tracking down the history of trying to get a sign at B M S and learned that, um, at town meeting in, I think it was twenty twenty-one, town voted to put one there and then the building commissioner authored a letter that said that enumerated the bylaws that said it wasn't possible. Um, but we have that letter, so we have the enumerated bylaws that would need to get changed. Um, but we also so we can, that's a path, certainly a good path to go down if that's where we need to go. Um, the very smart ladies, uh, on on this committee, though, had some questions that hopefully you guys can maybe answer. And one is that there's the possibility of instead of rewriting bylaws, to just file an appeal that would ask for a variance. Um, what's the likelihood of that being successful? Uh, but their thought was that might be a faster, easier way to go than than going directly to the bylaws. That's a possibility. So that's the first question. Um, and then to, if if that works, then after that, it's a matter of of designating the right sign. Um, we've done some research and have a initial bid from a vendor that does these kinds of signs for schools all around the country. So we are in the process of finding the best practices, uh, for what those signs look like, so we know where we're standing and what we're trying to do. Um, basically, the L E D portion of the sign is either two by seven or three by seven. Uh, best practices are either of those, no smaller than two by seven, or you can't read the messaging, right? Um, and so that.
Is that feet?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so that's that. That is the LED portion. In the, in the bylaws, we have, um. The question is, it does, is the sign designation, the sign measurement designation, is that just for the LED portion or is that the whole overall of the sign? So there's a question we need to address in any, whether we try for an appeal or work with the bylaws. Um. So yeah, that's where we're at, we're, we're kind of wanting to get some answers before we go down the path of, of. Write rewriting bylaws, uh, but we know there's a few issues to start working on and want to work with you to make it happen.
So, yeah, there was an effort to get a variance last time around, right? For our Z B A came to us. Um, asking for our reading on it and we said it doesn't comply with the bylaw and it kind of got stuck.
And so, so you know, a variance isn't going to work, it needs to go to the bylaws is what you're suggesting, Jay.
I think that's what we concluded, yeah.
I think the Z B A would appreciate. It would be cleaner if. If it went to town meeting as opposed to going to Z B A.
Okay.
Yeah, it's kind of a, um, controversial. Topic, when I kind of bounced it off, bounced it off people over the last few months. There's some pretty strong opinions about it, so I think it would probably not be a good idea. To ask for a variance, I think it would be better to get it to town meeting, so that we get. You know, we get everyone to be able to vote on it rather than have it, have people feel like we kind of snuck it in when they weren't looking.
Got it. All right. Well, then.
Right, and the, the biggest thing that. I would recommend you address is the light pollution. Because I think. Yeah, you know, you drive through Hudson and you see they have a couple that are honestly horrific. And the idea of putting something like that in Berlin is where people's strong opinions come from.
Hmm. Okay, the location that has been proposed is underneath a light pole, so there's that already, and you know, that, that already. Is the light pollution and the extent of it, I think, um, but the. The parameters with, that we've got within the, within the, the initial bids give exactly what we need, so that's, that's. We can certainly address that, not to mention, I, so there's bylaws and then there's like best use practices, right? There's how does this going to work within town? That I don't think are part of the bylaws, right, but are part of the proposal, I don't know what the right language is, but does that make sense? Because the school obviously will use it for school purposes, but it's right there on South Lawn. Rec will want to and need to use it to share the activities that are happening there, you know, if there is. Any kind of emergency that impacts town, there's a hurricane and the school becomes a shelter for people, like. That's when signage would need to be used, but in terms of best practices. The light could go off at nine o'clock at night, right, unless there's an event, there's no reason to have it on, so we could write that into its use documentation, I suppose. Rather than the bylaw, correct?
Well, we've, I, I've been collecting a kind of a worksheet, we've worked on it a few times, I think I. Showed it to you, Kyle, at the, when we met with the. Kristen and Chris, but, um. I was putting a lot of that in there and then we don't necessarily have to put it on the bylaw, but I was, I thought if we could answer. A bunch of those questions.
Mm-hmm.
Up front, it would be helpful to go forward, do you want to look at that?
Yeah, I'd love to.
Let's look at that, because I've got the latest version here. I lost my share screen button. Was here. There it is. Is that the right one? To the top?
Yeah, that's the one you shared before.
Okay. So, yeah, one of them that we have not. Still that yet is the dimensions.
Okay.
And you were saying that.
Two by, two feet by seven feet for the LED portion of the sign. And, and then the model that they shared has that on a three foot. Pole, you know, three foot base, so that it's up above the snow and up above, you know, some people can actually read it. Um, and then they had put a two foot. Panel on the top that was a stationary, you know, Berlin Memorial Elementary School, Town of Berlin, whatever that needs to look like. Um, so at the, it was eight feet tall by seven feet wide.
That's huge.
Yeah.
You could lower it, it doesn't have to be on a three foot pedestal, but you do, I, we have to, there's a, you know, there's. The fence, the, the rock fence that's there and then the snow that would build up, so you do want it. Up so that it becomes something people can actually see.
And I think the, uh, welcome to Berlin sign that we approved a. Few meetings ago. I think it's that high, isn't it?
That's in the current bylaws too, eight foot, eight feet tall for a freestanding.
Okay.
Pole sign.
So are you proposing? A s- a solid base or a base that's just got two legs and is open and, and?
I, I, I think that's up to, we could, I'm not making that proposal, like the actual sign is based on the pedestal would rise, what that has to look like, we could. We could manipulate and change and, and figure out what that, what serves the community best, right, whether it's. Just a basic pool or whether it is masonry that makes it look beautiful, I don't know, you know, that's.
I agree that getting it up in the air makes a lot of sense.
Mm-hmm.
Here's the, uh, let's see, let me get this to come up. There's the one down in, uh, Northborough. No, Boylston. That's four feet right there, can you see that? Are you, yeah, you should see that.
Yeah.
That's four. I think that's, I think this is two. Which is what Kyle was saying, and then that must be five. And then there's maybe another two feet above it, which is the.
Permanent.
Welcome to town or whatever, permanent part, yeah. Yeah, this looks like it is two feet high, the LED portion.
Hmm.
Yeah, the manufacturer that I've been talking with says two by seven gives you the right number of. Um, LED lights to pixelate it, so you can actually read it, uh, obviously they would love it if you'd go three by seven, but that seems. Big for that space anyway, so I think two by seven certainly gets the job done for what we are looking for.
Yeah.
Did you measure that Boylston sign, Jay?
Yeah.
And what'd you say it was?
Um, I think that is two by, uh, I don't know if I wrote it down or was taking pictures of the measuring tape. Oh, maybe I didn't. I did write it down, let me look in my notes, let me find them.
Um, so, given the fact that. The. Oh, if, if you're not set back from the road a good distance, then. It becomes a barrier to sightline, so having it up and open underneath means. We don't. Impact the sightline for people exiting the. Driveway there.
Excellent point. And it is, I think, um. Jay, on your original proposal that you had the, the position. Uh, so if you are looking at the school, it's on the right hand side and it is set back, you know, and not, you know, over kind of. Back far enough that it wouldn't be in the way of, of the roads and the driving sightlines, um, but. But yeah, to your point, absolutely, if you wanted it open for site reasons. That would be fine. The manufacturer just has it as the pole that is the supporting thing, right, so. How you actually want it to be displayed doesn't really impact that part.
Right. And this is two sided copy, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, you can do two sided and we would want to do two sided.
Okay. At the school, I'm not sure we would at this, in the center, if we put it where the current sign is, it probably only needs to be one sided.
But the allowance would be there for it to be two sided and, and.
Hmm.
That would just be a choice in the particular instance of where the sign would go, so, yeah.
Right.
Should I write in here, uh, two by seven?
I wouldn't say minimum.
Yeah.
I would say maximum.
Yeah, one head with three by seven, one?
I, I noticed that there's a. A sign in Northborough now by the railroad tracks that's just been put up, I. Maybe I'll try to. Measure that.
Yeah.
Um, because that's relatively new.
In your conversations with the manufacturer. Was there any discussion about? Um. Whether the brightness of the light was adjustable?
Mm-hmm, yeah, it is, you can adjust the lights, you can adjust the colors, you can, all of that. Uh, is, because, based on the technology that's available, you can set the parameters for. So in terms of, you know, we could. And they can, and I'll go back and ask again, they are able to offer demonstrations of the distinctions between what those might look like. Um, so we can get that as an example, if you want to set that in the bylaw and then, and be able to put that in there as a maximum illumination of whatever. I don't know what the measurement is, but you know, lumens or something, right?
It's either, it's either lumens or Kelvin.
Yeah, so we could, I can get that data and so that we have it and can make that definitions and you have your maximum illumination, for sure.
Yeah, because I think if. You know, again, uh, at least for me and a lot of the people that are. Not super excited about something like this. That's the problem, the problem is that they're super bright and, or they can be super bright. And they're just harsh to look at, they splash the color all over the surrounding area. Um. So if you can address that.
Mm-hmm.
In the language, I think this would be super easy.
Sure. I will ask for that data.
Yeah, there's actually a very large range of brightness that it needs to operate in, because at night it doesn't need to be very bright, and when sunlight hits. Hits it, uh, none of these are going to be readable, that's one of the problems with these things.
So do they automatically adjust?
I believe so.
Yeah, the technology may, you can set basically a, a schedule for the sign and it will adjust throughout the course of the day.
So, but you have to, you have to set that schedule, it doesn't just read what's going on.
I'm not, I don't think so, I think some of them have got, um, just a photo sensor in it to see how bright the light is.
Okay.
Yeah, it's probably that related.
Because it's huge, it's probably a hundred to one or something to try to get it to compete with sunlight.
Yeah.
If you're going to look at the one in Northborough, Tim, bring a, uh, measuring tape and take a picture of the actual LEDs.
Yeah.
Because, um, the pitch of the LEDs is what makes it readable, right, the more. LEDs, the finer the print can be.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it, and that's, that technology keeps moving, so. As you buy newer and newer. Um, panels to get better resolution for the same price.
Which is also what was, what, interesting talking with the vendor, because they're aware of that change in technology and they want to build that relationship. So they've got a good warranty plan for anything that breaks, and then they also have the technology basically replacement offer. Um, and their panels are one by one, so that you completely pull out a section and then push in another, plug and play, so it becomes a very easy. Upgrade over time. I thought that was an impressive element of that particular vendor.
And we're still talking about not having like movable copy and video and all of that, right?
So I'd like to have movable copy and video ability, it's a school, and if we could, you know, you want to be able to change the messaging, because there are events. Multiple events happening every day. Um, so not necessarily that the script, you know, flies in letter by letter, but that the message itself can rotate, I think is important. Um, and then I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to put it that there is a, that there's no ability to do video, because you just never know, maybe we. Town of Berlin is recognized for some amazing thing and we've got a short video clip that has. The children receiving an award or whatever, at some point, there's going to be something meaningful. In a video clip, that's just the way the world works these days, so, um, again.
How do you, how do you square that with, I'm driving down the street and I crash my car, because I'm trying to watch. Junior walk across the stage to receive his award?
Well, I mean, maybe that's not the right example, but, uh, that's where I think we look at best practices as different than the bylaws, I wouldn't out, I wouldn't. Rule it out in terms of the capability should be allowed within the bylaw, maybe it's the best practices or the. The town practices for use of it, document that goes with it, right? Um, that, that has those restrictions in place and the ability to have a, an intelligent conversation about that sort of thing as it comes up.
I will keep an open mind, but I'm not convinced. Um, you know, Tom, are you, are you one of those guys who refuses to watch videos while you're driving on the highway?
Yes. If you can't text, you can't watch TV.
Agreed.
I don't have a self-driving car, so. I, I need to keep control. Think about that, during the life of this bylaw, there's going to be self-driving cars.
Chair Sanford, when you are ready for audience questions, there is somebody that has their hand up.
Okay, I'm not ready yet, but.
Yep, just letting you know.
Thank you. Um, so.
The question of, of who's?
I'm not, I'm, I, like I said, I will keep an open mind, but I'm, I'm not convinced yet.
Right, and, and you should honestly get the police chief to weigh in.
Yeah.
On all of this as well.
Oh, yeah.
Because, don't forget, we're, we're, we're trying to write a bylaw that's going to be able to be utilized in multiple locations. So yes, the sightlines might be great at the school and you may be able to do that, but then there are other places that may not be conducive to this and. We run into a, a problem.
Right.
So. But it's an interesting question about how much of the restriction of. Content and other things do you put in the bylaw versus how much of it would be the responsibility of the. Person or job that we assign. Responsibility for.
Yeah.
Content to.
Like, there's, there has to be some kind of best uses, or this is how this is operates within the town or within the school, right? That has to be different than the bylaws, because the bylaws need to allow for the distinction between a school in front of the town and a school in front of the school. There are differences, absolutely, so those bylaws need to have a broader perspective. And then the actual use of that sign. We have to believe that the people who are using it and managing it can, can put those best practices in place. Well, and I think that's why we create that document as well, based on what other people do and what happens in other communities, you know, I, I'm not suggesting we create it out of thin air, I've. I've reached out and I've asked for, for those documents to come from other places and other vendors for just that reason, so we have a broader perspective. Um, but that's. Again, that's why the bylaws need to be reflective of a lot more than just what's in front of the school and therefore not so restrictive, but a lot more flexible.
That makes sense to me. It's like for the conservation bylaw, we were going to have another book that was. Had the details in it, right, Carolyn?
Yeah, the regulations.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Now, when you went through this, going through this spreadsheet, did you have any other um, things that you wanted to comment on?
Um. Uh, color in the current bylaws, there's a very, very limited amount of color. Current technology allows for, according to the bit I looked at a minute ago, two billion colors, so. Carolyn, if you, if you took a very one by one picture of your cheek, there'd probably be a hundred colors just there, right?
It's, it's the, it's the big garish colorful
Nah.
sign that I'm, that I'm concerned about.
We're not putting up a billboard though. I, I hear you. You're thinking about Boston and the billboard.
No, I'm thinking about the sign I drive past every single night in Hudson. That every single night makes me want to ram into it so I don't have to look at it anymore. It's
One in front of the Arbury or the one down by the?
It's the one driving out of down Main Street in Hudson towards Stowe. I drive past it every morning and every night.
I love that cause it wakes me up, you know, I'm sleepy and I go.
And especially on a rainy night, the whole entire street is bright red. It, it's horrific. That, that sign, I, I will not vote for that sign in Berlin. Me understand that it's not gonna be that.
That sign most likely has fewer pixel capabilities. So you have to put a bigger brighter.
They put a lot of detail on there.
Well, you have to, the more pixels, the more colors you actually can operate, the cleaner the picture, the less it it, it broadcasts, basically. It's like your television, right? The, the, the finer detail you can get, the less it's gonna make your whole room glow. The more it's going to stay right there on the television. It's the same thing.
Yep, I'm, I'm saying I'm open to being convinced that that is not what we are buying, but I will not vote for that.
Hmm, got it.
But how do you feel about having a bylaw and then a like best practices?
I
document that we, we
I, I will, how I feel about it isn't quite as relevant as to how town members tend to feel about those things.
And how do they?
They don't tend to love the after the fact as, as I can attest. They wanna see it upfront.
And if it's not presented as after the fact, but in fact as part of right, the, this is the bylaw change, this is the regulation for the school sign as we are proposing, right?
Yep.
Yep. That, who controls that language in that document?
Right.
But this is something where the technology and our needs and what we're comfortable with are likely to change over time and rewriting the bylaws is a big deal, whereas if you had the secondary document, we could make it stay more up to date over the years.
Yep.
Cause once we get it installed, you might find that people really like it and there's more things they want it to do for them. And you don't wanna have to go back and rewrite the bylaw.
Or find more money to change to the better sign in the second place.
Are you ready for your audience member yet?
Comments from the audience, please.
All right, Michael Harding has his hand up.
Hi guys, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Uh, can you see me?
No. I, I just, I just allowed you to talk. I didn't fully promote you.
That's all right. That, that's not a problem. Um, yeah, I've been listening to this discussion. Uh, I'll be completely frank. I think it's ridiculous. Not in the, are they hideous and gaudy and makes the place look like a strip mall? Um, kids nowadays and parents generally rely upon mobile phones, surely. So this is completely redundant and a, and a complete waste of money. I mean, other, other uses and other signs around the place, yeah, I can, I, you know, there's an argument, but for the outside the school so that the parents and the kids know that uh, the match is canceled on Sunday, it's why don't you use a phone and um, an app or whatever like that?
Well, yeah, you, you've seen the town, the uh, portable LED, well, it's not LED, whatever. Movable sign in the town center, right, Michael?
For the, for the speed limit.
Well, it's, it's like a construction sign, but it's had various messages on it. That has been very well received. I've interviewed a whole bunch of people and unanimously people appreciate that because they learn about, it's so hard to communicate with people in Berlin. We don't have a town, you know, newspaper anymore. Some people in the Facebook group and some people aren't. And there are a lot of people who have seen things on that sign, including me, that they weren't aware of and it's been a big benefit.
All right, sure, I hear you. Um, I was, I was just putting in my own personal sort of viewpoint upon it. I just, I just think they look terrible and I can tell the consensus of the board aligns with me on that, so I would just rather avoid those and find another um, medium to convey information if we could. That's it, ready guys? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
Is there any other members of the audience that?
Everyone's got their hand up.
Comments or anything? Okay. All right, so at this time, I think that what I'd like to do is to keep the meeting going. Uh, we have other um, agenda items, but to have, um, additional information, you know, garnered and then brought forth at another meeting, if that's possible, cause we have, uh, some information that we're gonna get for, uh, from different manufacturers for best practices and we're gonna have some answers on adjustment of colors and brightnesses and what's proposed, correct? Is that what I understand as we're moving forward in this?
Yes, that's what I, I will go find for sure.
Okay. Is there anybody else on the board that has a comment or would like to chime in at this point? Okay, seeing none, I will, um, we'll talk about this at a, a future meeting and I don't know whether it makes sense to just put it on the agenda for our next meeting or whether we want it in a little bit more time. Or I suppose I, we can put it on the meeting and then we can always push it if we have to. The next meeting is after Thanksgiving, right? Yeah, it's the Tuesday.
December twenty eighth. I'm sorry, November twenty eighth. Yeah, the Tuesday after Thanksgiving.
And then there'll be one meeting in December, right?
And then one meeting on the twelfth in December, yes.
And then we'll be into the new year.
Yep.
Um, I'll Communicate Kyle and you can let me know if you're ready or not and.
Yeah, I'll, I'll push to get what information I can with Thanksgiving right in between there. We'll just have to see how responsive people are. But I'll do my best and let you know.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Right, thanks.
All right, Jay, you wanna stop? Screen sharing? Yeah.
Why does that keep jumping from one monitor to another? Gone now, right?
Yep.
Alrighty, so our next item is the distinct, uh, continuation of the workforce, uh, housing. Workforce senior starter housing that we've been having.
We've got Seth and Mark in the audience. I will promote them.
Before we, before we do that, let's just, um, real quick, we, um, we've been working on this and I think that we really need to, uh, well, I'm actually, you know what, why don't we, we, we bring them up and, um, we can have our continuation. I didn't know whether we, we should, uh, discuss whether we should, uh, pigeonhole this into a, a single item or I know Jay has put on this workforce senior starter as a like a catchall and I don't know whether that's something we really should get consensus amongst all of us that that's the, what we really wanna go for or are we stuck on just starter homes, are we stuck on just workforce housing or we just keep it open enough that it covers different bases, cause I think that what we need is to satisfy the loophole or loophole that we have in our, um, housing production plan. It's for starter workforce and it could be either in senior housing, um, empty nester housing or whatever you wanna call it. Um, is that something that we wanna?
Do we wanna give it a name? Is that what you're asking?
Well, yeah, maybe just agree on the concept, cause I don't know as if other members of the board are thinking in those terms. That's what I'm thinking, but I don't know what the rest of you are thinking in terms of is that the direction we wanna go? Is that the direction that we're trying to plug the hole, not plug the hole, but to round out our, um, our, our, our housing production? Um, are we all on the same page or is this, am I all in?
Yeah, I mean, I thought we were looking at how to round out our housing production. I have to say, I was, um, a little bit fagined at the figures that were coming out in the last couple of meetings at, you know, five hundred K house because um, you know, that means you're, you're talking about, um, a household income of somewhere between a hundred and seventy-five and two hundred thousand dollars to make it affordable and you know, I don't really see that as workplace workplace housing, you know, I mean, that, that's, that, that's to me is pitched a little is pitched a little high and was telling me that I, I, I'm not sure that, that, um, I'm not sure that the hole in our housing can be filled in with single family houses, if that's, if that's gonna be the figure, but that's, that's kind of an aside. I think the point is that I agree with you, Tom, we need to say, you know, what are we, what, what is the hole that we're trying to fill and I, you know, I don't think it's necessarily a type of house. I don't think it's necessarily a density. I think it has to start with, you know, what's the demographic that we're, uh, looking at? What's the economic strata that we're hoping uh, to help out here? That's just about my feeling about it.
Right, and kind of back into it.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's, my feeling, the only reason to do this is to serve unserved people, it seems to me. Uh, not, you know, that.
It could also be to provide a path uh, for certain groups to get their way into Berlin where there may be other options, but they're infrequent. You know, if, if you look, there's, there was a house that came on the market in the last week. It was either on Pleasant or South Street and it was a very small, uh, like Cape, fifties Cape. Not, hadn't been renovated or anything and it was that's kind of like what we could reasonably build a, a new version of, right? And it was five something. The median house in town is seven fifty or somewhere in there. So seeing something come up that starts with a five in town is very unusual. But it does happen. The problem is it happens so infrequently. And if we wanted to have, uh, you know, young families buying their first home, be able to do that in Berlin and stay for a while and then move on to more expensive houses later on. For example, or we want seniors to be able to stay here and not have to pay seven hundred like they have to do up the street. Or, you know, I think the question is those three categories are all different. So senior housing, you don't need a lot of bedrooms or maybe not a lot of square feet. Starter homes, you probably do need a bunch of bedrooms and workforce housing, you don't know, could be either. But it just seems like we should decide, I think the last time we talked about it, it sounded like we had agreed we were gonna try to go after all three. Is that true? Let's just like nail it down so we can communicate it.
I, I prefer an effort where we try to accomplish the goal of supplying all three. And I think that you can, you can encompass all three in a, in a project that has variable numbers of bedrooms and, and sizes, so and, and you end up with a more realistic community because you do end up with potentially some older individuals as well as some very young individuals, which you know, is, is more reflective of the way neighborhoods um, traditionally, the villages in this town had, had progressed over time. Um, as opposed to a new subdivision that tends to have all the same number of bedrooms and welcomes, you know, young families with kids and, you know, that it's, it's a different dynamic, so I, trying to sort of supply a range of bedrooms, to me offers that opportunity to end up with a a starter home, a workforce home and a, and a retirement home, all in the same network.
I agree.
But the problem, as Thomas has said, is you know, our, our goal is to figure out a strategy that provides housing that's in that small A affordable realm. We've accomplished the big A affordable, but and, and the natural tendency is for those homes that people move into when they're established, get built here in Berlin fairly easily. Um, I think Mark might say that as land becomes less available, it becomes probably more difficult for those homes to be built, but, um, they, they dot the landscape to some degree already and I think we've felt that that range and I think Jay's probably right, if, if it could be in the, the low fives, um, unfortunately, that's, that may be the target that we can try to aim at. I, I don't, it's gonna be awful hard, I think, to get down into the fours.
Well, if we, if we do a mix of singles, doubles and multis, we, I presumably couldn't get down to that price.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I, 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 what I was saying was, I, I don't see us accomplishing filling the hole with single family single lot development. Um, I know that's what people in town prefer as a, as a picture development, but I, you know, something that begins with a five means you've gotta have a house and if, and, and setting aside, um, older families who may be downsizing and obviously then, you know, have the capital to put in it, that's, that is economically, that's a different case. But if you're talking about young families or workforce housing, uh, and you're talking about something that begins with a five, you're talking about a household income that begins with a two.
Right, so then if, if, if I'm hearing you and I'm, I think I am, then we need to be okay with multi, um, units that are varying square footage, varying number of bedrooms, varying um, configurations that'll allow us to see if we can attempt to get into that, um, um, price point where it makes sense. So maybe duplexes, it might be a combination of, um, row houses or whatever you wanna call them.
Right.
All in the same piece of property. And I think we can because we're, we're gonna, we're gonna do an overlay on this anyways, right? Cause you can't do it. So I think we, gives us the opportunity to be able to codify this and say, yes, we can, this is what the kind of mix that we want.
Right. Right, right. And, and again, yep. And what I was saying was if we start and it seemed like we were really focused on, you know, sort of single family, you know, smaller houses, et cetera. Um, I think if we start with that, then we're really just, to me, we're just sort of I think if we start with that, then we're really just, to me, we're just sort of dibbling the way forty B diddles and and creates opportunities for developers, but doesn't address the economic and social issue.
Right. That that's small A affordable.
Yep, right.
Okay. All right. So I think we're all on the same page. So I I think that we do have a direction that we're we're interested in going in. So I feel a little bit better now.
All right. So we'll document that. That's good.
So Susanna from ZBA is in the audience and has her hand up?
Okay, we'll take, yeah, we'll let's we'll take a quick question, but I don't want to get sidetracked, because I want to talk to Mark and Seth, because they were on the agenda, so.
Agreed.
Well, can we can we look at our, before we?
Let's let's hear the question first.
Yeah.
Okay, it may pertain to what we've been just discussing.
I I'm listening to what you're saying, and I agree that this is an issue that needs to be addressed. I have a couple of questions, not to be answered tonight, but something to think about as you're writing this overlay district is, as we know in the past, when they get they get sold the first time to someone in the affordable category, it could get resold, we, there's no control over it. There's no, there would need to be some sort of mechanism in place to keep someone from buying it and flipping it to make a profit, and then you've just lost your affordable housing.
So that that's not accurate, though, Susanna, you, if if a unit is affordable, it has to be offered as an affordable unit. If they can't find an individual that can purchase it at that and qualify as an affordable buyer, then that's where the tripping point becomes, and and it ends up being offered on the open market. What the Housing Trust theoretically is going to try to do is interrupt that process where the unit gets lost. And we've only lost one unit that way.
I was actually, I was actually thinking before that, Coulson?
That was an entire, that was before forty B.
Right, right. That's what I'm
And those weren't locked in in perpetuity the way they are now. So those units, when those individuals bought them, you're right, they ended up over time being able to capitalize on that opportunity, and they they walked away with a significant profit. But that's not the model that is available today. It's it's a different process.
Okay, that was just something I would, because I'm just coming into this now, but it was just something that
No, and I think, I think that that that's a perception that people have is that I buy this house and I only pay, you know, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and you know, two years from now, I sell it and and sell it for five hundred and fifty, but if you if you are in an affordable unit and you can't find a buyer that's qualified, that unit, when it's sold at market rate, you don't capture that profit. That is my understanding goes to the town.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so
But and then afterwards, it's just a regular market rate unit.
We've lost it, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that was just a first concern.
And that's, that's where the 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 Housing Trust and the money that's in CPA now for community housing, which is about two hundred thousand dollars, and they've got mitigation money that's probably close to over three hundred. So they have the Housing Trust's got close to half a million dollars. They, I think, might very well decide to target units that might be lost and try to step in, hold those units as perhaps a affordable rental for a while. And then over time, find qualified buyers that could pick those up as affordable units. So that's the objective in that part of the process.
Okay, yep.
That's that's ten percent of the, like, we're, we're probably going to have a ten percent affordable component of this, right? So it's the ninety percent is kind of the little bit more important. And the question is, how do you create houses at the kind of price we're talking about and get them to stay kind of in that range over time, right? And we were talking about limiting square footage and additions and things like that as a way to do that.
Right, and we could also make it a requirement. I mean, this is, this is not a well thought out thought, so understand that. But some sort of requirement that the Housing Trust has the opportunity to buy it.
You gotta be careful with that.
Well, I I understand. Some sort of, some sort of way to restrict the deed.
You you gotta be careful, that you can restrict a portion of it, like Jay's saying, but I I don't think you're going to be able to, you know, restrict the majority of them. You could do it through other means, limit the square footage, limit the number of bedrooms, limit the number of additions, you can do it that way. And maybe some of the configurations, like obviously, if you have a duplex or a triplex, makes it more difficult to add an addition onto something like that. The thing you want to be careful of is going vertical, because you can take a single family ranch and turn it into a garrison colonial and
Right, well, we talked about that, about limiting limiting number of stories and all of that, yeah.
Yep.
Yep. All right, there is another person who has their hand up, but do you want to get?
We're going way afield of where we're going.
Yep, yep.
Is, do you have another comment, Susanna?
Oh, no, what, it's probably too early to address it, but seasonal workers. But that seems like it's more in the category of accessory dwelling units. So I'm good.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thanks. But we'll take one more quick question, and then we'll go on to to Mark and Seth.
All right, Michelle. Hold on. There we go. Michelle St. Michael.
Muted. All right, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, I was listening to your portion about the forty B component and what goes with it in terms of deed restrictions. And there is a deed restriction that rides with the title. So to your point earlier, how do we know that someone's not going to buy it as an investment and then flip it? And then get somebody else to buy it for more? Well, you can't. If it has a forty B restriction, they're they're restricted to their income. They're restricted to going through the lottery. There's a wide range of elements that ride with the title. So if somebody goes to sell, if we get a forty B component, the next buyer has to meet that same strict criteria. And if they don't, they won't get it. So I live in a forty B community, but I have a market rate home. In the forty Bs, we had to allocate twenty-five percent of what we built to forty Bs. I think the forty B component is great. The reason I like it is because I see young kids in the neighborhood. I'm older, I'm sixty-two. I see young families trying to get established. And I see a lot of people who, all they want to do is buy a house and have the American dream. And these people that they apply to the lottery, there might be a hundred people applied, but you might get three or four people out of a hundred that really qualify, because it's a very strict thing. So I just wanted to make you aware that when there is a forty B in place, they don't just sell it to make a profit. And if they think that's what they're getting, then their forty B agent did not disclose properly of what they got.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Now, we can loop Seth and Mark in if you, if you could.
They are promoted, they just need to unmute and turn on the cameras and
Hi Seth, how are you?
Good evening. Both Mark and I are here mostly to listen, kind of as the board refines their ideas. As you know, Mark has a property identified that seems to be well suited for possibly what the board is looking for. And I guess we're just listening in to see what type of direction the board would like to go. And, you know, last time, we we did speak about primarily or exclusively a single family home layout. It sounds like the board may be looking at another configuration, whether it's going to be duplexes, triplexes, and a mix of single families. So if it's all right with the board, we'd be happy to listen and hopefully come back to you in the future with kind of a refined plan for the the River Road West parcel.
Okay, yes, we, it's 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 evolving as we're going through this as well. So, you know, we had, we had an idea, and, you know, now we're refining that idea, and as it evolves, we're realizing that in order to hit our objectives, that we need to expand the definition of what we originally thought we wanted.
No, and that's that's completely expected, I think, and I think Mark's on board with that as well, and Mark, do you want to fill him in on anything that's transpired since our last discussion?
Sure, you know, we hit, we headed off in one direction, it turns out not to be the direction you guys were looking for. But from listening to what's going on tonight, like Seth was saying, a mix of probably some small ranches, some some attached housing, and some mid-range housing to 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 hit every every gap of what you're looking for, probably some you could do, we were originally pitching two bedrooms, but if you you're trying to do some retirement housing, you could split and do a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms, or you could just keep them all two bedrooms. But, you know, you could have ranches, you could have splits, you could have capes. You could have duplexes, I I think you should stay away from triplexes. But because there's no, actually no savings on triplexes, they cost the same amount of money to build as a duplex, and everybody likes an end unit. And then if you're going to go to some three bedrooms, then you just make the house just a little bit bigger. So you could also go with not really spread them all out, you could cluster them. And even though it's a pit, you know, you would have some open space that could be landscaped and filled in over time. So I think as far as the retirement people and the price point, you know, like Tom was saying, five hundred is outrageous, but five hundred is the new three hundred. So welcome to the world of inflation, welcome to the world we live in, but that's unfortunately, that's where things are at, and and home prices are going to do nothing but go up. And as Jay was saying, the availability of homes in Berlin is almost non-existent. There's there's not a lot of lots. You have to rely on resales, and they're they're old, and they need updating. And these are new, so that's the the plus of that, and they one person moves out, another person moves in, so it fills the void for seniors, starter homes, work class at the same time. But and even like Tom said, you know, you had to make over a hundred grand, you know, the two, two people working, they make over a hundred grand, the, you know, McDonald's is paying fifteen dollars an hour. And I'm not saying that's work class housing, but there's there's plenty of jobs that pay seventy-five K. And if you get one of those and somebody else, that's, you know, you you qualify for the mortgage for these homes. So I think the other thing I want to impress on the board is this is probably the last place in Berlin that you could achieve this goal. Because there's no other place in Berlin that has the soil and the topography to do something like this. So if this is truly what you want to do, and that's what you're setting out to do, I think this is an opportunity for the town and also obviously for myself, because I'm a developer, I'm not going to deny that by any means, but I'd like to listen to what you guys have to say and comment as you go on.
Mark, did you have a chance to investigate further whether that water supply is viable, or is that the your idea of individual wells all over the place was the direction you were trying to go in the last time, but you were going to do a little more investigation?
Yeah, I've done a little bit of work. Once we go to this particular type of housing, you can no longer go to individual lots. So you have to go under the condo statute. So therefore, it'll be one, one piece of property owned by the whole association. And then you give the people use easements for their yards. So therefore, you could use the public water supply. And that would work, and would actually work fairly well. But the sewage would still be best to be on site because the soils are so good. So you do, what did I come up with? You do, you do about seven shared septic systems would function at a low cost, you wouldn't have to pressure dose the systems, and you could gravity feed the majority of them versus pumping the sewage over to the other system and building in the other system, because the other system is is raised and costs a fair amount to build. So that was, that was some of the the work that I've done since the last time I talked to you guys.
So you'd condo the septic systems, too?
Well, no, the septic systems, all of this, all of the, all of the waste would be under ten thousand gallons a day. So you don't trigger a sewage treatment plant. So you conduitize the whole property. And the, this, even though there's seven systems, they count as one.
Okay.
Because the DEP groups them.
Okay.
I I think in plain English, what Mark's come up with since the last time we spoke, and is is a viable avenue for us to condense the development a lot more by omitting the individual wells, that's the huge portion of the project that was going to take up a lot of space and spread it out. And what we're probably envisioning at this point and hope to come back to you with is essentially small pods of development where we're going to have a common access point, but individual clusters of certain types of housing. And each of those will have some limited infrastructure associated with them, but they'll all be serviced by the offsite water supply at this point.
Okay.
And Mark, have you had a chance to do any any testing there, deep holes or anything?
Yeah, I did testing back when Venakasa was proposing the fifty-five and over. I did the testing for him at that point, and I have access to all of his testing, which he moved forward, he actually put the cart ahead of the horse and moved forward on designs for drainage, sewage, and traffic, and he delineated all the wetlands. And I've I've done some work for him on and off, and I I get along with him. I know you guys are upset with him right now for where he's working. But I have all of, I have the stuff that I've done, I've witnessed, and I have access to all of that information. And it's it's more than enough. There is ledge in the back left. And even if you were to assume that twenty-five percent of the place was ledge, which it's not, there's ample room for drainage and and sewage and septic.
Good, thanks.
And and staying out of the riverfront with with the homes on the front right and the rear right.
I think the riverfront is, yeah, is just on that right side. I don't even know that it's on the back.
No, it's on the right rear, and there's some from the Assavet River, but it's crossing the street.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, so really, you know?
That we'll, we'll let you have that, yeah.
Yeah, that ship has sailed, you know?
So there's there's existing burms in the topography that's down there now that sort of fence it from River Road West. Would you be, you're going to keep those burms in existence, or?
I believe if you keep the burms in existence, the butters would would I believe if you keep the burms in existence, the abutters would, would uh, take more kindly to it. And I think if you keep a central.
That was my, where I was thinking.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think if you keep a, a single entrance with a, uh, obviously some form of loop with the cul-de-sacs, you would more than suffice for public safety. But if uh, the board wanted to see a dual entrance, that could be accommodated as well. But uh, there's been plenty of uh, both forty B and single family, uh, single family. Well, Estherbrook and Autumn Ridge was a single entrance. We had the ability to do two entrances, but it, it impacted conservation. So we got a waiver for that. But this whole thing is uh, on an overlay anyway, and it's, and it's approved by the board. So that would be a, a, a decision for the board.
Public safety is going to want to weigh in though.
Yeah. Uh, it can be done. It just takes out some of the berm in the front.
Yeah.
Then you could probably, you could probably pick a place where uh, there's low impact with the uh, the lights on any of the homes across the street.
Yep.
So I'm interested on what you guys have to say and what your input is and and me and Seth can take all of that input. And uh, if we have any more questions, we can hit you guys with more questions and then do what would serve the board and the town the best, um, the best proposal for what everybody's looking to achieve.
So Jay shared a conceptual drawing. That is certainly what I was looking for. Um, Jay, did you share that with Mark and Seth?
No, I wanted to make sure you guys were okay with it. And then I think we should show it to them.
Well, I'm on board with that. I'm, I like that concept. Um, I don't know about Tim or Thomas, or they've had a chance to look at it or not?
Thomas hasn't seen it, but Tim has.
Yeah, I like it.
Yeah. So is that something that we're as a board willing to share with Seth and Mark at this point or?
Yeah, because I think.
Yeah. I think it's long distance idea. Yeah.
Okay. Can you share, can you share your screen, Jay?
Yep, let me just do that.
And Mark and Seth, all I ask is you keep an open mind as you see this?
Right, right. This is more of the concept that I think we were all talking about.
You, you're not approving Mark to do this right now? So what I, I'll just explain some of the features, the feature. Um, I think you all know, I, I found this book called Rural by Design that was written by someone that Tim knows that um, it's about how when you have a kind of a rural community like ours and the sprawl is coming, you can add housing, but maintain the rural character attributes. And so most of us have copies of the book. And I've been, I tried to incorporate quite a few of the principles in the book into a plan just to kind of get us all thinking and talking about it. Let me explain some of that. So we were talking about mixed type, mixed types today. This one has got several clusters of single families. Can you see my mouse when it moves around? It's kind of small.
Yeah, if you can zoom in a little, just make it a little bit bigger.
Okay, yeah. That's too big there. Let's see here.
There you go. Well, go back on.
More? Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
There.
There you go.
So this is, the current entrance is down the bottom here. Make my mouse bigger, because it can't. Um, and there's these circular pods that are single families as well as the L-shaped one on the right. And then in the lower left-hand corner, uh, these might be duplexes or you know, houses close together. And then there's a strip here that might be row houses or some type of multifamily in the middle. Oh, there's duplexes in the upper right near the playground. So it's got that. And then um, in the book, there was, he cited a bunch of research showing that clusters of homes in the six to fourteen or something unit range and better yet, in the eight to twelve unit range tend to become small communities. So the people tend to get to know each other and keep track of each other and um, and so as you, I know Seth, you and Mark were talking about pods. So that's what I put in here is um, eight unit kind of small communities that would feel a little bit different because there's kind of an access road with trees to separate them. But they're still part of this large open space in the center. And you've, you could have amenities like a center that would have some ability for them to have group dinners and other activities, kind of like the co-housing units have in a playground. And some of these houses have got garages and some don't. Right? Some of them I have shown attached to have the garages attached to each other. All just examples. And in this case, you can see the septics. These are the same size as what your drawing was, Seth. I I basically copied your septic layout and scale onto this drawing. And so some of these could be in the green spaces in the middle and others could be scattered around the edge. If we're not going to do um, remote sewer. And I, there is room for wells. The yellow dots are a hundred feet away from the septics. But it certainly makes the layout way easier, as you were saying, if you are able to use public water and not have to figure out how to shoehorn that many wells in. Uh, what else we got here?
Your little storage area.
Ah, yes. So one of the problems when you've got slabs and small houses is everybody has a lot of stuff and no place to put it. And they always end up renting storage units. Or their junk and their motorcycles, your car. So down here is a unit that is storage slash M C slash S S U R. Guys all know what that means, right? You know? Man caves and she sheds.
Okay.
In uh, Moltenburg, I've got a house up in Moltenburg, New Hampshire, and there's someone up there that is building these open buildings. Um, you know, maybe a dozen of them connected to each other. And they're just a shell with a mini split and a toilet. And they sell them to people for this kind of purpose. You can store stuff in them, but more likely you can have it as a little activity center for your car and your motorcycle and your friends and maybe your home occupation. I don't know. So why not put those inside the development, restrict them to people who own property in the development? And then they don't have to go store their stuff offsite somewhere. Have you ever done that, Mark? Have you ever built something like that in one of your developments?
No, no, I, I would think uh, if you didn't restrict sheds in the immediate yard area, it would be a little bit more personable. And if for the areas that didn't have it, you could, you could provide a space where they could, they could build their own shed at their own expense.
Well, these are a lot nicer than sheds.
Yeah.
And they're attached and they're shell. So they're pretty inexpensive to build. But then people can customize them. And
I would think any expense over the initial home expense is going to start to put us, put us out of our price point, to be honest with you. As well as this, I, I like this concept, but it's got an awful lot of pavement. It's got an awful lot of roadway. Um, I'm not saying something similar can't be done. I, I think if we do, if we go with the, the shared systems and the public water supply, we could tight, we could tighten up the radius on the cul-de-sacs a little bit. And uh, we could do an emergency access over to Boundless Adventures. So that satisfies the um, fire and safety. So it would be, yeah, yeah. Going through Boundless there, you do that. They have a, I believe they, I, I think they have a, a crushed stone parking lot. So if, if uh, they're from the point to the left out remains all gravel, then you're not going to get into a whole bunch of extensive drainage. It cuts down some pavement. So if, if you can whittle down the pavement a little bit and uh, and make the accessory buildings um, a little bit more optional, uh, you're going to get closer to that original price point that we're going for. But I, I do, I do like the concept. I like, I like the, uh, how everything's spread out. I like the individual neighborhoods. And um, I think something like this, if it's refined just a little bit, could, could work.
Okay. Yeah. One note is the, the, these circles I figured could be one way. So they'd be half the width of the other roads. And then you just have, have uh, you know, grass or something or mulch on either side. So the fire department's able to get in.
You could do, uh, you could do a gravel shoulder with, with a stone and then mulch over it. So that way they could uh, they could drive over it in all conditions. So there would be the uh, the current um, the new the chief and the, the captains and stuff and stuff. They're more uh, they're easier to work with. They, they're, they're more everyday people and they're not um, looking for excess. So I agree with you.
Yep. Yeah. So one other feature, the, the light brown is walking, biking, running trails that you would
Yep.
put in, which would connect all these little sub-communities into the main community.
That, that itself is.
Yeah.
I'd say that itself, as long as they're non-paved surfaces is, is uh, easy to achieve. And it, obviously if they're used, they'll be maintained and they're not going to grow weeds, so forth and so on.
And one of the things that's really nice about that property is there's a berm running around almost the entire thing, right? So that
Correct.
You know, so I've shown a lot of trees here, but they're already, around the edge, they already exist. And they're
Yes.
way up in the berm. So you get really nice isolation from River Road West. There's a lot of truck traffic there.
Yeah.
I was um, yeah. And, and having, you know, there's, there was concern by the abutters about having access in two points. They'd looked at the, the previous drawing. And I guess this, this entrance is okay. The other one was on a curve where the uh, visibility was not great. So it might be kind of dangerous. So like we were talking about running up to Boundless Adventures for the second entrance.
We, we'd be going that way for the water anyway. So uh, we connect the water and uh, we, we'd have to go through their, their, their roadway and their parking lot. And then uh, there's about, I don't know, a couple hundred feet where the topography gets elevated, but we could, we would still have enough uh, depth, even if there was shallow ledge to go up and over the, it's kind of a gravel berm on the left-hand side. And um, that, that could work.
And then uh, I spoke with the chairman of the Conservation Commission tonight, I had a training session about the fact that there's this stream on the eastern side, but there's a berm. If you look at it, it's a pretty steep hill. It must go up thirty feet or more from the stream and then comes back down on the other side. And Carolyn was saying that that might shorten the two hundred foot buffer. So you'd be able to, otherwise these houses that are way on the right are going to be too close to the stream.
Sure. Seth could answer what you can do. Uh, I think the first, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the first hundred feet is sacred. Seth?
Well, I, I think the big thing is that it's probably lending itself to a natural low point on the property. And we do have to put stormwater somewhere. And it's probably going to have to go in portions of that. But under the, the Wetlands Protection Act and the Rivers Protection Acts, um, there's portions of that activity that would actually be exempt. We, we could in fact construct stormwater systems in there as long as they meet D E P standards. Um, so that, that would be somewhat usable and also preserved in that way. Um, and then by all means, you, you can alter that area and you can put buildings in there, but they're subject to certain restrictions. And it probably wouldn't achieve the density that's on this plan, but it's not a complete non-starter. I, I think we can balance that. And if the berm's there and the commission, Conservation Commission um, is, is willing to work with us on some of those things, we could certainly get creative in that area.
Yeah, I, I think the berm uh, just lends itself to a natural barrier. Um.
I mean, not to interrupt you, but I think the project as a whole, at least the perimeter of it and the open space, um, this would probably be an improvement over existing conditions too. In that we're, we're going to make better open space with, with a large portion of the property.
Sure.
The number of units are the same, right, Jay?
Uh, yeah, approximately. I think it was thirty-five because there's eight, there's three groups of eight, two groups of six, thirty-six. And you know, when you actually lay it out, I mean, I don't know whether it's going to, the available space goes up or down because
Sure.
You know?
But we're, we're not, we're not, we're not taking away units from what the, what the, what Mark's original proposal was.
Yep. Yeah, I've shown this to a number of people randomly and there's been very positive response, which makes it feel like it, it might, if you could actually implement this, it might find its way through town meeting. Right? If everybody
It's a plus.
you know, complained about it, then uh, it'd be a tough.
Right.
The original layout, I think we would have had a hard time getting through town meeting because I wasn't getting good feedback on that. But I see how that was really driven by having to have individual wells and septic everywhere. Puts a lot of constraint on the layout.
Uh, Tom there, Michael Harding has his hand up.
Okay, before we get to Michael, is there any other um, comments that our board members want to make? I can't see Thomas or I can't see um.
I can't see Tim.
Tim.
See.
Yeah.
Oh, he's right, he's waving.
I'm good.
You're good?
And a thumbs up from Mr. Wheeler.
Okay, cool. Uh, can you um, um, let us be able to hear Michael?
Yep.
Please.
Michael, thank you for being patient.
Yeah, hi. It's actually Karen Brown. Um, I am pleased with the diagram that has been shown. There are a number of neighbors on the call tonight. We're all texting each other. So I've collected some of their questions so that um, I can speak for the other folks who are on the uh, line. If they want to join in, they'll raise their hand and join in. One question was, um, in previous experiences, we have been notified several, several times about the neighborhood getting its water from a natural aquifer. And the neighbors are concerned about the sewer system and how that plays with the natural aquifer that runs under our homes in this area and where we get our water. I know you don't have an answer for it tonight, but we would like to make sure that there is no disruption to that aquifer because the homes on the south side of River Road do depend on that water. Um, another point that came up is we know the, the drawing is not to scale. Um, and I'm sure when Mark does his work, you know, we'll have a better drawing to scale. So we have a little more um, understanding of how things will be laid out. We are appreciative of Mark's comments about keeping the existing berm. That is something that has been in place actually for a while. The Malloy's who are sitting uh, just to the east of this diagram, they own their berm. It's part of their property. So I know um, they're on the line as well and want to make sure that they don't have any problems with their berm. In the past, they have had to work with Worcester Sand and Gravel to put things back that they have taken down. We don't want that to happen again. The front berm where I reside, where the neighbor who's also on resides and a number of their neighbors run, they are all very pleased to see the road going around the back and connecting to Boundless Adventures because it is a dangerous road on that curve there. And it's uh, better safety and it's again, going to protect the berm and uh, people across the road there on River Road. So you know, overall, the feedback I've gotten is of positive from the neighbors. I do have one neighbor that um, has questions and concerns about the number of children that would be in the area and how that would impact the school, uh, what kind of tax revenue. The town thinks they're going to uh, accommodate with this, if there's going to be any mitigation further for the neighborhood. As all of you know, the South Berlin area has been um, inundated with shopping malls, hotels, apartment buildings, um, Boundless Adventures and a number of things where most people don't have these things in their backyard. So there is is some thought by the neighbors about, you know, oh, it's us again. And there's so few of us to be able to raise our hand in town meeting and say, we really don't want it in our backyard. Everybody else does. But w- what would be some of those components that the neighborhood could benefit from to keep us a neighborhood? Um, I'm looking through my text messages. I don't think I have any more questions, but overall uh, so far, everybody's uh, pleased with what we're seeing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Karen, thanks for your input on the uh, second roadway. That was helpful. Yeah, Karen, thanks for your input on the uh, second roadway. That was helpful.
Sure.
Okay. Any other comments anybody wants to make? I know that there's, it's, you know, information that was just presented tonight, so. People need to digest it a little bit, and um, we do have some. Comments from the neighbors that are helpful. Um, we don't have answers for. Many of the questions that were asked tonight, but we will certainly. As the plan evolves, uh, be able to come up with figures to be able to satisfy. Uh, those questions or answer those questions. I don't know if it'll satisfy them anymore. Um, so at this point, I think. Um, I would like, i- if everybody's in agreement. To be able to take this information and, and digest it, marinate it a little bit, see how. Uh, it fits into people's original thoughts and whether this is a, a workable. Um. Concept, um, and if Mark and Seth would take a crack at refining this, if they think that um. You know, it needs improvements or can make improvements. Um, and then um. Reconvene at the next meeting and, and, and have a continuation of the, the dialogue that's this. Uh, because if it's going to be. Um. The direction we wanna go in, we need to start crafting overlay language and things like that, so we can get on a, uh, an agenda. Does that seem like a workable? Plan?
My question.
I guess.
Yes.
Because no one said anything.
Yeah.
If, if you're looking for us to reply, it's, it's more than workable. Uh, there's, there's a lot of direction in this. We can certainly refine it and come back to the board. Um, if there's any issues with it, we can certainly alert you to that. Of why we had a problem with it, but it, but in general. I think this sets us down the road that um. That we can really put pen to paper on.
Okay.
I can send you guys the files too.
That'd be great. If she sends it to Mark, we can, we can share it and, and kind of. Compare notes.
Great. So our next meeting is on the twenty-eighth, right? I think it was the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eight, twenty-six, twenty, whatever that Tuesday is, twenty-eighth, yep.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eighth.
So eleven twenty-eight. Does that guy give you enough time, guys? I know it's, you know, we're coming into some holiday times and what have you, but I like to keep the momentum going if we can. Cause we only meet one time in December.
Seth, I would think we could get at least a concept. We won't, we won't lend to topo completely, but we should be able to pull something together.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah, we can, we can by all means, and I think the, the big thing from, from our end is, is kind of. Define what we think we need for like a road width. Um, sidewalks, things that, that may be a departure from some of the town's current subdivision rules and regulations. Um, that, that we would need the board to give us more direction on, if that's something that they see being incorporated in this.
We haven't, we haven't done a subdivision, Seth, with sidewalks ever, so I don't think that sidewalks would be issue, and we've gotten waivers to road trees. Basically because we're gonna plant other trees. Um. I, I would think the, the waiver list you're talking about shouldn't be of issue, because this is, uh, this is an overlay. This is a whole different project. And uh, we'll design something that works. We can pitch it to the board and. Obviously, cost is a constraint for keeping this whole thing to work and move forward, so. I think if we all work together, we can achieve, we can achieve the, the goal that everybody's looking for.
Okay.
I think you, I think basically you have to drift away from the subdivision regulations, because this is not a subdivision. This is a whole other animal. So take that, yeah, take that and throw it out the window and design a new concept for what's gonna work for this type of housing.
Just gotta keep in mind that we need to sell it and have it be successful.
Understand. I was, I liked the comments from the neighbors. Uh, that was good that they backed, they backed the fact that they like going through Boundless. So if that's an emergency access only, then the people that live over there aren't gonna get upset, so we don't irritate them. And we have the neighbors across the street that have the berm, and we have the farm to the right, um, Molly. Who uh, is not gonna have impact of uh, any advances on his property. So we, we going into something of this scale with uh. Without that much resistance is, is uh, I think a very, very, very good thing, and uh. We can work towards achieving the three different style. Uh, three different style uh. Homes that you want to fill in the void for Berlin.
Yeah, it's pretty remarkable how well-suited the property is to something like this. I didn't realize it till walking around out there.
Yeah, it lends itself to it. It's, it's, it's like Play-Doh. It's shapeable, you know, it's um. It's uh, it's forgiving.
Yeah, there are even places where there already are trees, you know, you may, might be able to try to design around some of the. You know, little forests that are there, so you don't have to plant so many trees.
Yeah, you can go around with a brush hog and mow down the invasive species and leave some of the pines and some of the other things that are growing. Then pull those, pull those out by the, the invasive, invasive stuff out by the stumps and. Spread heavy, thick wood chips, so stuff doesn't grow. And uh. As well as, there's some things that can be transplanted and uh. Look a little bit more natural as opposed to just forced landscaping. Through that elevation and uh, rocks and. Things to, you know, you got some, create surface boulders in an area that wouldn't, you know, like it used to have and. Then you, you go a heavy, thick density of wood chips, so then the invasive stuff doesn't grow through. And as that rots down, it forms a bio, like a, like a biomat of, of natural soil to, for the woods to return.
Okay, so um, let's tentatively plan on eight thirty, uh, next uh, meeting on the twenty-eighth.
Sounds good.
See you then. Have a nice Thanksgiving.
Pardon?
Have a nice Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Seth. You too.
Happy Turkey Day.
Happy Thanksgiving, guys.
Yeah, pleasure, you guys. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark. All right, board members, um, is there, let me see. That's it for the uh, agenda items. Is there any? Other uh. timely items that we want to discuss or anything else? Mr. Wheeler.
So. Um. Our contact at Highland, at Solomon Pond. Potentially would like to attend the meeting on the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Um, sort of an informal. Start the conversation about any modifications that. Might. Be appropriate for the development agreement and the zoning that. You know, would accommodate. Their being able to become more viable, I guess.
How mu- how much time do you think they'll need?
I know, if they had twenty minutes, I think they'd be fine.
Okay. Maybe we can put them from eight, um, eight, seven forty-five to. Eight, ten, and then eight, ten to eight forty for the sign, sign.
Yep.
And then Mark from there until. How long we wanna go.
So I'll, I'll reach out to him again and, and try to push him to commit to a.
Okay.
Notion that he wants to. I, I said to them, if they really think they wanna try to put something on a warrant for the annual town meeting.
They need to talk to us soon.
We need to start the conversation, even if it's a fairly informal introduction, so at least he knows. Um, who's, who he's chatting with and stuff. I'll push him.
Okay, thank you. Any other timely items you wanna chat about?
I just wanna say, thank you, Jay. Coming up, coming up with that, it, it.
Yeah, that was great.
Nailed exactly what we're looking for, and it's. Pictures are easier than words.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, it really is kind of cool that the property is. Great for doing something like, I mean, it seems like it so far.
And it's, it's so much better than all of the, you know, over the years, so many people have come to us. With other. You know, possibilities. Um. That just would have not been as appropriate.
Hmm. It would be cool to have this as the, kind of the first point that people's. Come to Berlin. For and then move on and make room for the next, and they end up buying a single family and staying, right? After the.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. And the next pages is great.
I, I expect to. Get some draft. Um, language for. The. Workforce housing or cottage housing overlay that uh, or zoning that. Central Mass is working on, and I think they very well get that this week, so I'll, as soon as I get that, I'll send it around everybody.
Perfect. That'd be great.
And they're also working on a, um, a zoning. Change that would provide for uh. Sort of that. Temporary housing, short, short-term housing, you know, the. The way in which that's impacting communities and I, I uh. They're work, because we signed up to participate in both those projects, and, and I think they've, they're getting close to being able to share some draft language, so.
Me.
And. And actually. I think they, they reached out, I was saying to Jay, they reached out to Kristen, because she was the one who signed the. The agreement for them to work on. These two projects with the town. And they're gonna meet with her on Friday. And they said. Kristen said. She, well, she. She said. She'd be happy to meet with them, and I told them I would be happy to meet with them too, and if we wanna. If more people wanna participate, we could. Do that. If somebody else wants to join in, we wouldn't have a quorum. If somebody, if more than one wanna join in, we could post it and uh. Cause what's tomorrow, Wednesday? Yeah, I mean, we.
Well, Friday during the day.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Two o'clock. But I think that's just a preliminary, and then I would assume that what we do is. When we get ready. Not at our next, well. You know, probably not at the next meeting, but at the, maybe. At that December meeting, we might very well get them to come and present to us, um, after we've had a chance to digest the language a little bit. Maybe that makes the most sense. Shoot for the, what, the twelfth of December?
Yep, okay.
Yeah, I was thinking the short-term housing thing didn't, was never gonna be relevant to us, because we don't have any kind of attraction. But. As the, the sports complexes seem to be springing up everywhere, all of a sudden they're. Desirable and can be made profitable. And sometimes they're going into malls, and we've already got the hockey.
Yep.
Pretty substantial. Hockey operation down the street, and if that continued. And if something like that went in the mall, there may be people who wanna do. Airbnb.
Well, if the pickleball takes off in Natick, maybe you could put a pickleball tournament.
Well, the other part of that is when, when you end up with this short-term rental stuff, um. My, my understanding is you've got a license. You, you've got to record your use with the state. You've got to collect a room tax. The town has an opportunity to impose a room tax. In addition to what the state collects. Um. And in a number of cases, I think what the commission was talking about was. You know, people end up uh. Having to record their. The fact that they've got this. Short-term rental property that's available on a, on an annual basis, um. Just so the fire department, police department, all those, you know, know about it.
Well, yeah, some towns even make you record every rental, because they're limiting how many you can, how many.
How many days.
Rent per year.
Yeah. So, um. And, and I think it could either be, it, it might just be a, a town bylaw as opposed to a zoning bylaw, um. So, you know, we'll see what they throw at us, but um. I think that that's the direction they're heading in, is. Trying to give us some options that. We could look at, banter about, so. Be fun.
Cool.
Excellent.
Yeah, it's just in time, um. Couldn't be much later. We'd be in trouble.
Yeah.
Alrighty. Jay, do you, do you wanna join in on Friday? Do you have time?
I'm not sure. I'm gonna have to see how my week goes. It's getting.
Well, if anybody wants to, let me know and I can uh. I'll send you the, the link.
Yep.
It's Zoom.
Oh, it is, okay. Yeah, I might do.
Yeah, you can join in from Winnipeg, or. Wherever. Florida, North Carolina.
I'm trying to get this house that was supposed to take three months. To renovate rented. Since it's gonna be. Supposed to be June.
Well, an hour Zoom meeting isn't gonna make it happen any quicker, you know, so.
True.
You may think it is, but it's not. I've been there, right?
Yep.
Great, you want a motion?
Yes, please.
I move to adjourn.
Oh, second pass.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and it's non-discussable, discussable.
Disgusting, isn't it?
Disgusting, that's right. So I'll ask you to vote. Jay Teach.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Adjourn.
Have a good holiday.
Thank you.
Have a good holiday all.